Thank you.
I'll give an overview on that as well.
Right. Hi, everybody. Welcome. It's nice to meet you. Okay, have we got anybody in the public session?
No.
I know nobody here, it's just that you might be on the other side. Okay, right, any apologies? We have apologies from Council Collins, Council Harvey, Council Howard, apology from Council Jane Ward, you will cancel the shame. Okay, thank you very much. We're happy to agree those, yeah? Right, any declarations of interest? I'll go first. Okay. I'm still on things employed by Buckingham Youth Centre. So, when the item comes up, is item, what is it?
We saw it was something limited.
Well, oh, it's always been limited, yeah, and yeah, I think we just point that. Yeah, when they, when they change into charity, not as limited then. So, yes, item eight, I will leave the room, but then I thought Howard would be here to chair that part, so we all have to start our work.
Non-net senior council.
Okay, all right. It would be for the committee to vote somebody?
Yeah, at least for the committee.
We always have to do that. I can chair if you don't have to. I'm very good.
I'm sure you'd be, I'm sure you'd be voted anyway for Ben's search line.
For that.
That's the name, I don't know, nobody else.
You want to chair.
Okay, so it's the last meeting. I'll screen. Anybody else that have got any more declarations? Of course. Okay. Right, it's the last meeting. Are we happy to agree that we win those?
Agreed.
Item four minutes of the Communications Strategy Group. We happy to receive those?
No.
Thank you. Item five, we've got projects. So, item one. And as usual, I'll go by page numbers in the top, they're changing, also three of ninety-five. So, five, three ninety-five. Four ninety-five.
Thanks for the clear notes.
Should I, I should mention, Chair, these are getting very much towards the close of play for the last one or two years, there are still some bits to be found, so it's not completely, completely finished and obviously it doesn't take into account of those things that we need to reserve as well. Fairly healthy.
Yeah, thank you. Item five, if you had to buy it. John?
Yeah, which roundabout is the one that hasn't got any sponsorship? Number three, which one is that?
Is it near me?
There you are, free or not.
Roundabout's free.
It's not. I don't know, John, it's gone out of my head, I can't remember.
It's near me.
What about the signs on, John?
I didn't know which one that is, and it's kind of stupid.
I was only trying to be helpful.
Why it hasn't gotten you?
I know that we, we discussed it before and we were told what roundabout three was, but I just got that and I didn't.
I can't remember off the top of my head, I think we've got somebody that we're almost uncertain is going to take it though, so I don't want to spread the news for next year.
Like a good garden peach.
All right, John.
Well, I guess the question is, do we drop the price, you know, in effect, if it's not paying anybody? No, that's the way to go.
It's got the standard to all around the town, it's saving that.
I, I think it's sorted, John, but I will double check for you.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, one first and then after. Yes, I have them, no, it's just. Oh.
Work on my ground, yeah. As we're coming close to the end then, under, uh, defibrillators four one six eight, we're only spent not even fifty percent yet. Are they calling the money off?
No, it's just our servicing costs, it's possible that we've got one that's not been invoiced yet, there are still outstanding invoices.
But it's the defibrillator team, it's, it's not us, is it? Is it us?
No, we have responsibility for three of them, I think.
Oh.
I'm also seeing on a regular basis, so that's just our funding.
So, it's again, just slippage, timing.
I suspect they're waiting for an invoice, but I can double check after this.
No, it's, you know, it's.
Yes, I do.
Um, it's one on six on ninety-five, I'm not sure if they have.
Uh, when or not, but it's, I think, three months, six of ninety-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, the actual income for the shop mobility, what, what, what's happened now? Have we got mob north visiting town centre?
Uh, sorry, what number are you on?
Is that one oh eight five?
Top line we've paid for this?
Um, it's just people have, um, the actual scooters of all three, the only thing we charge for is we'll get higher if you take it away. I think we just had one or two people who have hired them for a little bit more than, than normal. Um, it's not, I mean, whilst there's a percentage, it's, it's significant, it isn't actually cash wise, a huge amount of money. Um, it's very, you know, we have a couple of hires and a few wheelchairs up for a few weeks, that's, that's over the course of the entire year.
But you can hire the whole scooter, can you?
No, 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 scooter, the scooters are free to use, but they have to come out and go back the same day, you can hire a wheelchair that you take away.
Right.
That was a hospital completely, it's once upon a time. Right, Robin, and then John.
Yeah, and just to say that, um, like four, four seven nine, it said unexpected works to electrics, what, not the problem with that, what was it? Um, um, we'd be aware of it, it was unexpected works.
It's under two four nine.
Four seven.
Four seven zero nine makes sense.
Don't know what it is, just out of interest, what was it?
Um, it is literally what it says, the lights and sensors weren't working properly, so we needed to get more electrician out to get them fixed.
But equally on ten to twenty-six, we received more income than expected, which for the community centre, they also must record our thanks to the, um, again, for what they've done, because they've obviously done a good job, as we wouldn't have got the income in, would we? Um, and we'd said that we've, uh, written non-business, that, that, what's, um, significance of that?
We are still looking at that one, um, have you got the latest on that?
So, this is where, um, there was a court case that a council lost, um, in High Court, where, um, some of the activities in the, um, in the sports centre were deemed that they were not eligible for VAT. Uh, so the HMRC lost the case and then all councils had to submit a claim to reclaim that portion of the VAT that we had overpaid.
Oh, that's good news then.
Yeah, so that is income that we weren't expecting to receive.
So, definitely going to come up to the table when we get that then.
Well, we'll hand that in.
Yeah, that, that's it.
Oh, that's good then.
But it, the note next to it is because we weren't hitting budget for it.
Okay, which case, thank you very, very much for the work you've done on that, um, and much appreciated.
I have to say, Jude did both far the most calculating.
Yeah.
Then you send that back.
Send that back to the earlier, it's a positive, isn't it, you know?
Yeah.
You know?
Thank you, but thank you as well for your work.
Team effort.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those factors, we've got more money back, which is good, isn't it? Not we often get money that way, is it?
Okay, so page seven of ninety-five, John, sorry.
You know, I was, I was going to echo what has already said, I mean, it's great that we're saying they're still, it's been used as much as it is.
Yeah.
It's really good.
Yeah. Okay, so seven of ninety-five. Robin?
We've got here, chamber, um, unexpected repairs door, is that because the door's continuing to, that's, um, four oh nine, what is that because it's continuing? Continuing to be a problem?
We had that problem with the lock and you had to find a locksmith out, which was slightly over.
Yeah, not an issue, maybe what it was and then, um, the community centre structure repairs, well, we'll discuss them somewhere else, but yeah. No, and, um, yeah, as with on the other thing, is it on, what, ten sixty-four, that jump?
Ten sixty?
Where, and we were still free country then. Ten sixty-eight, we didn't, were a free country then, um, ten sixty-four, um, we've got the note on the section one oh six received, so that means we've received the money to fund, was that the, um, problem player that we mentioned, the, in the accounts, it's the same money, it's not another thing?
No, 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 that's the section one oh six, that we've spent towards the playgrounds that work that we've done.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that's what it was, I thought I wanted to know.
Better lower down.
What it was, um.
Good, eight, John, ninety-five. Okay, how do you then, John?
Yes, I was going to, um, commend the increase in the events sponsorship income. I think, no matter how this is, quite significant amount of resources we've got in there, and that's good if you're getting more, it's just without help, a lot, so they go all under the team.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
I'll tell the chairman, I think.
Oh, what?
I'll tell the chairman to bring it up, we bank the team.
Um, I just wondered what happened to parties outside Villiers? I thought they were there permanently and now they've gone.
Um, I've had this question from Karen, our understanding is that Villiers were going to deal directly with Plantscape, so I presume they'd be taking away to be replanted. But I don't know that for a fact, because it's, they are Villiers' responsibility.
Oh, okay, even though it's on Villiers' act.
I was going to say that, wasn't it?
Well, they said that they were going to take over the responsibility for them, um, it's part of the deal, wasn't it?
Yeah. I think one of the concerns was that it was going to fall to us to look after them and pay for the upkeep, and so that was part of the agreement, that Villiers said that they would, like, keep that maintained, so, but it was discussed in T C N E, right?
Yeah, it, it was discussed in that, because originally we were concerned, we were firstly concerned that there should be planters there, but secondly concerned that we hadn't budgeted to,
That was it.
To do additional planters, and, and if we had done that, that additional planters, that would be quite an increase in our budget.
Yeah.
Then the community board were involved, um, which I probably will remember, that they were going to put some money towards it, and then, um, as it worked out, I don't think that particularly happened, and they actually brought their own planters and then they actually planted them up. But I think that they, that the agreement on use of that land was not with us, it's with Buckinghamshire Council, so, um, it's not our,
Yeah.
Our concern really, what goes on there is really is question to Buckinghamshire Council and.
Is that right, John?
I'm not wrong with that, am I?
Right, so let's be fair, we didn't have community board income towards the plant, so we have, we sorted it out in the first instance, and then it goes back to, um,
Villiers.
Back to Villiers.
But we couldn't pay it, yeah.
No. All right, uh, page nine of ninety-five, John?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, page eight.
I'm sorry.
Um, the cost of the string, um, for the remembrance parade, I can't see where the income is, they can see this as a victory victory, see income to cover, where's the income?
If you go on to town centre and events income, it's, um, one one oh four.
Oh, I see, right. And that's coming from R B L.
They're from the R B L, they have a, uh, a local fund.
Okay.
I think, to be fair, John, so you know, Peggy Dale, you remember Peggy Dale, she left us some of money to the British Legion, to be used to support the Christmas parade, Peggy Dale, who works with, um, that's good, and, um, and fine lady, she, um, in her will, she left money to the British Legion, and I think they paid for it out of that, not actually the British Legion funds.
Right, thank you, Robin.
So, she left it, make sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I just think we should be aware of that.
Absolutely. Page nine of ninety-five. Page ten. And, Robin?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's worth noting, isn't it, that we ought to record our thanks to, let's rush on that, because if you look, we've got more income than expected, from the, both the, um, flea market and the market, so that's a good thing, I think, to note, um, and record our thanks in a minute to the market manager for the work that he does on that. I think in talking to him and air correcting on that, I think it made quite a lot of difference when we provided the, um, the gazebos for the flea market, which means that they're, they're more resilient coming, um, when the weather's a bit iffy than they were before, and that's meant that that's kept that income up. So, that was a good decision.
Thanks, Robin.
And the market, you know, market manager, so that's a very positive.
They, they have the markets, they're not really, but completely gone for the year, um, and that is due to Brussels, extremely hard work.
On my centre of thanks, what's all this? All right, yeah, thank you. Page below. Okay, there we go, I'm going to pay, item four point two, the next B. There were the numbers at the top, so page twelve.
The, our query, obviously the biggest expenditure on this page are the dog waste, um, is the, something I don't feel we're going to do. Can we just check, Acreman's, they are local, John? Because there are quite a few local tree surgeons around, are Acremans a local?
Off the top of my head, John, I don't know, it was quite a specialised job, because they had to get the equipment down for quite narrow, a narrow path, it wasn't a straightforward, just looking it out, um. I don't know, I left out Lee and, and I'm trust his judgment on the, I don't know, this is appropriate.
Robin?
It's purchased, this is Nick, so, um, probably saw it before, but, um, the angular water purchase, will be purchased from angular water.
What am I looking?
And whether the water we were paying for somewhere, why it just.
At the top of page twelve, so that's.
I believe it's, we've obtained them to buy water, to something, but, but, um, quite expecting that not the water rates, it's purchased something particular, letting it show here, here.
We have, we have a number of water accounts on these.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter, it's just that, you know.
Great, thanks.
We can't apply.
I can look back.
No, 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 I mean.
Find specifically which one it is, but, um, we do have a number of, um, council we pay for water across various areas.
I mean, it also, um, six, um, there's also the thing about the fallen tree on the railway walk, which actually probably means we were doing what we needed to do, which was to take a tree out, um, or it's fallen and clear it away, it's just.
Yeah, so it's quite, yeah.
It's quite a lot of money, but, um.
It was the one that fell into, you know, along the railway walk, and we had to express, you know, all space of the pond.
Yeah.
It was quite a difficult place.
Yeah, that was the one in the middle, wasn't it? That, too bad, yeah.
Okay, page thirteen. John?
Yeah, what is, um, I've lost it now, there was a payment, K X eighteen V V V. It says service of works to K X eighteen V V V, again, I forget the answer, boss, I see.
That one, I'm going to say, I think it's the ride on Moa.
Okay.
It's the registration number for it, if needed.
Oh, I see, yeah.
It's towards that, we're going to try and work, he didn't do it.
Fine.
There?
Yep.
Thank you. Page fourteen. Fifteen.
Yeah, can I, people in the places, what's that?
That's the, um, town centre research that was commissioned partly for the neighbourhood plan and partly through T C N E.
I don't need to say that.
Same question.
Page sixteen. Seventeen. That is, that's done on. Right, item five, fund transfers. So, we have people like that, do you got anything to add?
There haven't been any yet, um, they probably will be in the course of the next week, and we've been at some, um, yes, I'm expecting to move a little bit from basically our current, to the savings account to maximize the interest, but that hasn't happened yet, so there's nothing to report at this time.
No, thank you. Okay.
We, we've had the first chunk of the capital tax.
We have.
So, they pay it in two chunks, I don't know why they keep hold of it, um, because we won't be here in much time, it seems, um, why they have to hold the money, or if it's like pocket money, isn't it, it adjusts, and, and we would be worth asking.
It is fairly standard.
I know it is, but we would have it in our bank earning interest, couldn't we, um?
Just spend, have a collect, yeah.
You know, we get the interest when they give it us, we've, they've had quite a sum of money for a period of time, um.
As Steve points out, they haven't collected it yet, because you pay the old council tax monthly.
I know that, but they, I get that, I know it, but I'm just being.
But it is the normal way, it's another.
I know it is, I could, thought it was worth mentioning it.
Right, item six, quarterly banking regulations, happy to know those.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Item seven.
Eight.
Eight.
Eight, sorry. Okay, so, yeah, so, I've got six, I've got nine from six is quarterly banking regulations, and seven, I've got annual community grants, well, you've got, say, eight.
Yeah, um, eight on my general is.
I've got that.
Yeah, and mine too, yeah.
Yeah.
So, who's got eight? All of you?
Yeah.
Do I download mine before anybody else, then, probably? Must done.
The guy, the guy.
That is. Let me see, put on this one. This, I know I downloaded this one early, so it might be on, yeah, all right, I've got it on this one, what's ten?
What's number seven?
Number seven was quarterly.
Yeah, all right, so I've got, it's properly done on that one.
Okay, I don't know where that's come from.
Did you have a draft copy in discussion with a club past the meeting perhaps?
Um, we did have a draft copy, because we talked about it, I don't recognise some of the items on this, I don't, we don't have it.
Yeah, okay, right, and so, um, item eight, grants update, is this the one in this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, because I'm employed, but may be not employed by the youth clubs, I'm going to vacate the room, um, because we expect it of anybody else, so what I'll do first though, is if we have a vote, if you go to the vote, sorry, on who can chair the next item, so is there proposal for anybody to you chair next item? Somebody?
Yeah.
I propose wrong.
Thank you. Anybody tapping the bar, Ben?
Absolutely.
All right, and you did have it turned up though.
So, I'm going to try and do it.
Either, just, yeah. Yeah.
You don't have to know.
I, I want to sit there, you know, I can't see, Abby, if you have to.
We need to vote on that proposal.
Yeah, we do.
Sorry.
Absolutely right, absolutely right.
Just, just.
Absolutely.
So, can we have a show hand this, please? That's unanimous, thank you, and I love Spain, yeah.
I'm from Comber. After the eight, yeah. I'll bet you that's some questions.
To the corner.
There's a wheelie.
Yeah, 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 thanks, Steve.
You want to share it?
I don't know. Personally, yeah.
Sure, though.
Um, yeah, so even though I'm not here, if anyone's got any questions, I'll be happy to answer those after your discussions.
Goodbye.
Well, you've all got the report, and it's to do with the recommendations around the grant, and would town clerk take us through the rationale of the report?
Um, there are two ways of handling this matter, um, that are fairly clearly listed by, um, the deputy town clerk, I think the staff, we don't really have a particularly strong view either way, this is, um, an option for members, really. We have obviously things done previously by organisation, folded, and then we didn't get our money back, so I would have that in the back of your mind when you're deciding what you want to do. However, they have said that if they don't run and they don't restart properly, that they would be looking to return the money, so that's.
Right, members, let Abby first.
Because I need the chair to step back, because she's employed by the youth club, it's not running, I should employ her.
Um.
She stood down.
I don't think that's.
Technically, she'd own the books and would be if they were going for, while she'd be working, Abby, so, but they haven't been, because the clubs haven't been meeting as they should do. So, um, so she hasn't been, I understand.
I, I, to be honest, though, it's not really, she, she's declaring a bikini interest in it.
So, it's not a red.
No, look, we just want to ask that, is, do they need this funds to enable them start working? Because that's, that's the question now, because if you don't give them the funds, then you more or less kill them off. And I'm asking that, is there a way employees of the youth or volunteers or people or associated with the youth club get paid or receive compensation?
Mm-hmm.
Given if they don't get this funded? That's the question.
I am not aware and they have not told us that they are unable to restart due to funding.
What normally happened historically, the, when the community centre, youth centre was, um, run by Dr and Sheriff County Council, they're going back in time now. When Buckinghamshire Council no longer funded youth services, the, um, they set up a trust, take over the, um, the running of the youth centre, and they, there's three trustees, um, and they run the youth centre, and there's a manager beneath them, which we appoint people to it, which Ryan is a member. And, um, and, um, but we're there, represent town council and see that, so what it is, the money we have to give them actually funds wages. Um, it doesn't fund the overall running of the club, they publish their account, it, Ryan surmulates, um, I believe he's given verification.
Yeah, um, I've just got to add something on that, I, I published them a bit late, but I have something today to.
Yeah.
Or link that.
And those minutes of accounting are to publish, so you can see them, but if we do not give them the money, you're absolutely right, how can they get up and run if they have the money?
So, just to confirm, who, who needs the funds to run?
Yes. But, well, that's not what they told us, but, I mean, I don't have a personal manager or.
They, their accounts are published, the community, they've got any set of accounts, the money they've got in their accounts is what they've got, and the money is what's spent, it will be done. And many of that is, um, other costs they've got, but we actually basically, our funds, I'm, I'm obviously happily corrected, I think they go towards funding the wages, which are not full-time jobs, and it's unusual, because it's a charity, and that's what I think they use our money for. Although it may not be shown that in the account, it's one saying what I believe it is.
Thank you.
Right.
Um, just sort of a point of, uh, from what I understand from taking previous grants, awards and things like that, we've usually had this in the private session, am I correct?
What with grants, well, no, with, well, we're making.
Or a woman, right?
Some discussions have been, but we do have to publish our decisions with.
Yeah.
With grants, there's nothing here, basically, what we're, we have been told by Buckingham Youth Clubs is that they are suspended all three youth clubs due to very low or no attendance.
Yeah.
And existing staff have stood down, they haven't told us that this is due to lack of funding, that's the reasoning, is that there are just not enough kids attending to make it viable. So, the question we're asking is, do members think that we should give them the money anyway?
Mm-hmm.
In anticipation that they will start up again, and if they don't, we'll ask for the money back?
Yeah.
Or that we delay the aim until confirmation is received that at least one of those clubs will restart?
Um, John, and then.
Well, a couple of words, one is, one of the times that I was on the management committee, unless things have changed a lot since then, um, I think most start with going on zero house basis, so they're only paid when they're working, they're not paid any other kind of money, as well. Um, secondly, I would imagine that there's still money in the kitty, um, to enable the organisation to run and reboot itself, so as long as it needs this money to, to continue, I don't say. Um, um, thirdly, remember, it's not just a youth club, it's also a venue, and they also do let out rooms and have to manage those rooms, and, you know, manage the centre as a place of various things, and it's for artists, there's dancing, there's, and so on. That will, that is, I'm sure, continually, so we're just talking about the youth club a bit. Um, so I think with all of that taken into account, I still take the view that we should. Um, so I think with all of that taken into account, I still take the view that we should pay them the money as agreed. Um, I think we would need to go to the full council if we didn't. I think we should pay them the corporate money as agreed on the basis that they are, that they will refund us. I don't think there's any, I don't believe there's any risk for them not refunding us if they weren't able to to regenerate the the youth club. And the reason I suggest that is because I think it's a better confidence.
Yeah.
Now, you know, we're doing our bit to help this organisation, like you're saying, reboot itself, reboot its office, you know. Um, so that these one youth club or whatever can 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 be restored uh, for the exercise of the town. I think if we didn't give them the money, that's not going to do their confidence. And I think whilst it's a very competent organisation, um, confidence is a different thing and that can be dented. And I don't think it would help to dented their confidence by taking, by keeping the money, um, away from them. So I'm only based on those that we give her option one.
And before we do that, Anthony and Martin, what's a bit, so I think Anthony, but.
Thank you, Chair. Um. I'm a bit concerned about setting precedents because even though, um, this particular organisation, we have confidence in them by saying that we're prepared to give money before, uh, then people can use that as a precedent in the future to be a bit slow or certainly reticent to refund monies because we have, I believe, had problems in the past. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
And so, so looking at it purely from an accounting point of view, I would, I would suggest option two.
Right, um, thank you. And I'd go to Martin and Abby on about the venue.
Um, yes, I I thought this was fair cut actually. Um, I didn't see any other way of going forward apart from option two. Um, they have informed us that they're not, uh, operating at the moment. If we had any other one coming in, uh, before or after, then we wouldn't have, uh, given them the money. And I also think it throws into question, uh, not the funding for them, uh, let's, you know, let's take that emotion away from this, but the the four-year, um, cycle. You know, basically they've got to, you know, start again because they will be starting again. Um, a- as I said, that doesn't mean to say we, uh, take away any, uh, uh, future funding, but I think they just need to go back to square one and we start the whole process again, which means funding and cycle and everything once they're up and running. And we've had a number of, um, organisations that have come through. Uh, yeah, they do find it difficult to get off the ground and we have given a small amount of money to some organisations that want some money to launch themselves and try and do the, uh, uh, meet their aims. Uh, but because they're new, they they just can't do that. So that's where we step in and we could do that to the, uh, youth club again if they needed those funds, but, um, but we're not party to that and that's not for us to make, uh, a decision on their behalf. So I'm with, uh, option two.
Um, just before we move to the Abby and Ryan, we'll come back. Um, before we move that, what's for you, town clerk, what is the position that we we should make such that what the four-year grant is, we need to know where we stand? Because we have an agreement with them on four-year grant. Um, so I need advice from you on where we stand on that. So we don't go very into the agreement we already got.
The four-year grant was awarded on the basis of them running the youth clubs. Um, at this point, they're telling us that they're not running the youth clubs, but they want to start back up again. That's that's the question at the moment is, do we pay them anyway on the grounds that they're they're saying their intention is to start back up again? Or do we hold off until we have confirmation from them that they're actually going to run at least one of those youth clubs?
Um, which case, Abby?
Yes, it's it's my understanding based on the recognition that there is sufficient funding for this club to to take off. Um, it also has other sources of funding such as the run highs. Um, it's also clear that they don't need this fund to start up. Um, so we'll be supporting off the two, uh, along with, uh, Anthony and Martin, uh, that we wait for them to start before we extend the, um, grant to them.
May I clarify? The the recommendation was that we wait for confirmation they're going to restart before we we pay. So we wouldn't necessarily need them to actually restart. We just want confirmation that they are going to, um, that they are going to and that they've got a date. Does that make sense? So we don't have to be.
A day is that? Is that a date of the first club meeting or what does the information look like?
I think we would probably use our judgment on that, but if they start, if they come back and tell us as of the start of, I don't know, June, we will be running the youth club every Thursday in these hours, then I think that fits in with the agreement that we have with them under four-year grant. If we know that they are going to do it, to pay them. Whereas, um, at the moment, we have no information or dates. It's just an aspiration that they want to start running them again.
I think Abby back and then go.
We'll just come back on that, um, because my understanding is this is why we are revisiting this because the youth club aren't well prepared as we close down and they're looking to restart. I would assume that there will be those bank, bank there um, activities around that and restarting. So I think we need to at least be sure what that confirmation is. That way we'll be the solid date whereby we know that the optics have been, of the, of the students or the youth have started going in there again, uh, before we then extend that or else this exercise will have been more or less not necessary.
So you said, you said everything amending the wording to the actually have to have restarted before.
So you have to kind of be onto them, it's until, you know, about start or there's a certain date.
Yeah.
Something.
So confirming that they are going to start was what we would be looking for under option two.
Yeah. Before we move to that, um, Ryan and Don will turn that and then we'll try to move forward in a way that we decide this.
Thank you, Chair. Um. My initial reaction to this was that we, as a big, you know, backer of young people within this, within this town, um, we should provide them with as much support as we can. Um, looking at it now, um, from a different perspective, also, we've got to take into account of, um, the public's view of us as well. In terms of the grants given to other organisations centred around youth work as well, um, they were, um, they had to provide various things to us before we gave the money out. Uh, and in, I believe it's five point three A and B. Uh, the agreement was to run three youth clubs, uh, for secondary school age young people in Buckingham. Now, granted, it's saying three youth clubs here and they're stating that they're starting up with one. We hope we can support them to go back to a three, uh, three-day, you know, youth club, um, opening. My my support is slightly leaning towards option two, um, into the, um, it's.
Job.
Yeah.
Well, that's the one option one. And the reason is, but the most direct comparison of this was putting Streetlight. If those of us who remember, that when that began to have some critical moments where there were people turning, you know, if I've been doing that, I don't remember the detail, I have to tell that if somebody else can. And they wanted to rejink their, their way of delivering, um, support here within the town. I think a couple of them came along to all of our meetings and made that pitch. And we backed them in their, in their change and we didn't withdraw any money from them. We simply said, yes, we'll back you. Come back, there's no evidence going on, but so they did. I think they've now gone back to a youth club model. But they did for a while, they go to the last meeting model, as you were, and meeting young people by the escape park or wherever it is they wanted to hang out, as it were. That's the most direct comparison that we got to this, to this occasion, the the this evening. And I think if we were to go for option two, then we'd be treating the youth club much, much more harshly than we treated Project Streetlight, where we allowed them to do something a little bit different. Clearly, the youth club are trying to reinvent themselves, this this ideally of the workshop, whatever, commercial event in in June. I just think it just doesn't, doesn't help if we at this point to take the money away. We're not going to lose this money. This money will come back just if things don't go where they depart in June. They don't know they can to re, to reboot, like you say, to re-present what it is they do. The young people, which cases, they're still not a good young people. Then I think that's a kind of exchange of prices for youth themselves. And they would like to deal with that. At that point, they're going to base the money back. But I think once you take the money away or not give them money that you said that they're due, I think would be unfair and harsh and not in comparison what we did with Project Streetlight. And secondly, the very decision tonight, I think the decision is going to take my full counsel because our grants are a full council decision. Um, at the, uh, pre-assembly. So we might want to make a decision tonight, but I don't think we could properly make it until next week next.
This this decision would sit in the resources, councillor. The total amount that is, uh, um, budgeted towards grants is a full council decision with the actual awarding and this, this is.
So it's a bit hard reading it.
It is, yes.
Okay, I lost it. But I do think, I really do think we give them the same understanding and support that we get at Project Streetlight. We cannot not pay them the money. Give them the money.
And and this is.
So proposing option.
Um, this is what I would say. Um, one of the things that we we've got a perfectly prudent with money, which is important. And we've also got to make sure that any action we take doesn't facilitate something negative.
Hmm.
Now, right, so I would promote, propose something if the town clerk agrees, that we don't choose an option one and an option two at this moment. But we ask the town clerk to get, because I I sense the concern because of other issues with, uh, funding. But we, we've had alluded that they said that, um, if they didn't, they'd pay us the money back. So, which would be either go, if you go to option two, you're always saying we won't trust you till you pay them back. So I would propose an amendment to option one, that we would agree option one only with confirmation that that, which is proposed in the tenure, that they would, um, if they don't get up and running, have the money. Mainly because it sends a signal that we support them. Secondly, by doing that, we'd have a, town clerk would have had a correspondence of an agreement that if they didn't get them run, the money would return, which could go to another organisation. I'm worried that those of us around when youth club follow and the amount of work that was put into that to get it up and running. And the fact that if we're not paid, they'll just end up being a community centre management collectively, um, if we've gone in there. And we have, as John quite rightly said, been very lenient and very understanding of another youth organisation in the town. And we actually put twenty-five thousand pounds into this youth centre historically to actually make sure they had the funds to actually get up and running in the first place. So I'm not thinking that option two is the way I've done. I respect the views. That's why I would like to propose that we agree option one. Once a letter of confirmation is come to the town clerk, that if they did not start up again, um, we would, I don't, it's slight wording of the words. What I'm trying to be is enthusiastic about them getting running without giving the impression that for some reason we don't trust them. They've been a good organisation. Uh, this is, they're getting in difficult times. And this is the time that we have to stand with and make sure that they can actually get through that because the building, if not, we'll just have one more community centre in Buckingham, which isn't used for youth. And the amount of thousands and thousands of pounds which have gone into their open years, not only in this town council, but some Buckinghamshire council and the agreements that we've done to get that building up and running fit for you, do you need to actually not, not, not be too hard? I mean, it might not be the view, the meeting, I'm quite happy for that, but it'd be the view of the meeting, but that's where I would go. But the often one, we're going to remember, once we receive a letter of confirmation from them, that if they didn't get up and running, they would return the money. But only give it them after we receive that letter of confirmation. Addie?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I think this is probably a few points. Um, I think we all around this team support the youth club. I think that's a point that should be made clear. We all voted for this grant to be given. And what's brought our attentions to having qualities achieving the purpose of which the grant was wanted. It's also been confirmed at this meeting that the youth club is not lacking funds, but has sufficient funds to start up and continue the equal. So to my understanding.
Point of reference, I think, we did not apply, John's absolutely right, we did not apply that principle to the Project Streetlight. They had funds, but we didn't then say we won't give you any money. So we have to show.
Chair, let me, Chair, let me just finish this. And aside from that, there are also other meetings in which they could generate revenue. The reason why this has come on is because if for any reason, I agree with John on this point, that it's a solid organisation, that they're not going to go down. And we've put in sufficient support to ensure it doesn't go down. But to secure public funds, what we're doing is to say, when you're ready to start, we'll make these funds available. We're not taking the funds away from them. We're not keeping it, we're keeping it for them until they're ready. And then it will be transferred. So I think we should be clear that this is not a show of lack of support or is to further support them and encourage them to start the youth club so they can get it. I think that's a, that's an incentive for them as opposed to no incentive at all. So I will still recommend and I will propose that we look at option two and, you know, and we would for both.
Yeah, well, um, we'll, we'll move. I just want clarity from the town clerk, but if we go back to town clerk, um, are you confirming that we still have a legal reason to pay them the money, um, what's the money, which is, which means, because it's how, we had comments about this six four-year grant process, which has been discussed. And if we've changed that, are they outside the four-year grant process? And are they not outside the grants process? Because it's very important that we know that when we make this decision.
At the moment, they are, they are outside because the, the money is there for them to run these youth clubs and they're not running the youth clubs.
That's Liam. That's where I want to clarify. Martin?
I likely option of another option or tweaking option two. Uh, I hear what Abby's been saying and yes, that's got, uh, some good merits there. Uh, we have got an agreement to pay them and and again, you know, all the support and stuff, it's Buckingham youth clubs, you know, it's got, you know, it's is embedded in Buckingham. Let's not, um, let's not water that down at all. But, um, they've asked us to run three youth clubs. And we've agreed on their criteria to give them this amount of money from whenever we probably do it, April.
Oh, it's May. That's right. It's due imminently.
Right. So, but if they come back and say we're only running one, then I don't think we ought to give them that amount of money to start with. So I think there ought to be a pro rata in what they are running and when they start running it or then. Because if they don't do it till August, hang on. That means they've got an awful lot of money, more money between August and and the next, uh, payment. So we've got to have some adjustments for that bit. And if they only run one over that time, maybe they phase it two and three to get it going. You know, we ought to, but if they don't, then we ought to, uh, look at that as well. So I'd like a, you know, either option three or a amendment to option two to take into account those delays that they have, um, uh, come up against.
So at the moment, there is a potential amendment to option one and a potential amendment to option two, which neither have been seconded on this time.
Okay, well, I was saying the, Robyn's option, option one. So let's put that on the table. And then see if that's supported. If not, then we may, we may do it on the table too. But option one, the second is.
Then we need to agree option one, once we have a letter of information that they are wishing to start up.
But that, that wasn't the main point of my head back and up. The main, we have, we, we know in Buckingham, that there are many, many charities run mostly by a similar group of volunteers who, uh, maybe, you know, change chairs every now and then and so on.
A similar group of volunteers who maybe, you know, change chairs every now and then and so on, but. We also know that some of these trustees are, I'm not getting any younger. I may be finding other calls in the late times, um, I may be finding other reasons to do other things and so on. And I just think that if we withdraw our support, because that's still from the options who feels like. Um, then I think it could give reason for, the three trustees are all eminently wonderful people. I know them all three. You know, fairly well. But it might mean this could be a kind of. A moment where they say, okay, I've had enough, and there won't be, and there won't be the money else to step into their shoes. And I think it's our job as a town council, got the support and the leadership. To these often very fragile charitable organisations, so that they continue. And then also look to succession as well, of course, as all organisations should do, including ours. Because obviously you've got elections next year, we want new people around this table and so forth, because then there's some people, I'm not going to be standing again. So I think it's really important that we carry on supporting in the same way that we supported Project Streetlight. I think if we, with, with all our support or add all to caveats or contingencies in the way that, I, I respect what you're saying, Martin, but I don't think it's still work. By the way, and I think what might even happen is that we'll have a community centre um, on, on the London Road. But no one's going to be running, because it won't be an organisation to run it. And then what happens? Probably will pick up a tab at that point. Or somebody else will pick up a tab, or it will just blow, it's a bit like the building next to it, let's be clear. We know the building next to it, that's not functioning, but neither is it.
No, no, that used to be.
And that's, that was down to one trustee for a variety of reasons, not being able to continue and so on, in, in her shape and organisation. You cannot underestimate the fragility of this big society. Which is run by a lot of very worthy, very, very noble, but increasingly aging trustees. And I just think now is not the time.
Well, if we, we're going to try and help by, the town clerk wants the wording, then we can bear that and move on. And then it is not good, we can move on to the next vote. Um, what I'm, what the amendment was, was we agree option one. Once the town clerk has secured a letter of confirmation, that, that if the club did not continue, they agree that they'll pay the money back. That's all it is. Um, so that showed the support we want. It means that we're not, not going to hold the money until they get it up and running. But we're showing that they've got the money and it gives us the guarantee that the money will come back. These are, John said, really. Fine people with an affinity and, and, and free problem, very well-known members of the community who are completely. Um, absolutely trustworthy and in every sense of the word. So I, I, I'm putting that proposal, we're happy with that wording.
Yep, I definitely find that. So this is the option one as amended.
Yes, and then we'll go on that. If that falls, we go back to the board.
Just take a warning again, please.
Yeah, John, I'll, I'll change it then.
I've got it. Once the letter of confirmation was received, that if the club does not continue, then they will pay the money back.
Yeah.
That's true. Is there a timeline on that?
Very good point. Um, the timeline on the response.
Yeah.
I think to be responded within, um, by, certainly by the trustee, not the. Management board within, um, I think two, twelve working days or something, which. Gives them enough time to meet and talk about. They've got enough time to talk about. Uh, would that sound unreasonable, two weeks? Would that be unreasonable, that time?
Can I just, um, just, just add to that? Um, I think I, I will be happy to, to support. An amendment in the say is to pay the sum, as opposed to saying upon receiving, receiving confirmation. Because it's, it's assumed that trustee, that if they will pay it back, you know, that, that's what, that's our assumption. Upon receiving written confirmation of a date.
No.
Comment.
And I, all I'm asking is taking the tenure of what I think the meeting is, that we are a supportive organisation. Is that we write to them and that the wording is, that on receipt of. The confirmation that if they do not get up and running, town clerk will receive the money back. Um, um, we would go to option one. And the reason we've got that in is to try to get a halfway between the two options. Which secures the public money and, and within two weeks. I think that, that, that gives them time to meet, discuss this, and it isn't. And gives the town clerk to actually exercise it. So I'm going to propose that we go to that.
I'm just sorry, I'm just wanting to clarify that second amendment. So you want me to write to them, and if I don't hear back within twelve days, I don't pay the money?
No, we don't. If we don't hear back in twelve days, we have to come back and rediscover it, because then option two is a discussion then. We have to rediscover it on option two. We can't vote on option one and then agree option two. We, we, we unvoted on option one, so we need to actually either agree option one. Then if that's not agreed, then we have to discuss it again to, to option two, as I proposed.
If I won't pay the money, because the money is due at the start of May.
Yeah.
I may will come back for further resources.
Well, yes, we, after this vote, if it comes back, and they, they would have to come back. And then we'd have to rediscover option two, but I'm trying to be supportive.
No, 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 what, what I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you're asking me to do. So you want me to give them twelve working days to respond to me?
Yeah.
And if they do not respond, I will not pay them the money, and then we will discuss it again at the next resources.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the right way. So I suppose we go to the vote. John stepped in my men, my amendment to option one. All those in favour of the amendment to option one?
Well, we agree.
Right, two. Which ten, though, against the amendment to option one? Those abstaining?
The amendment was.
Amendment for, which case we have to move down to second person.
Can I make the number, sorry, sorry, point of order, Chair? The amendment was accepted by the proposer in second. We didn't have to vote on the amended. We had to vote on the amended motion.
Correct.
I don't think we did that.
No, we didn't. We did again, you're absolutely right.
We were voting on whether to accept the amendment or not, which is not our thing.
No, you're absolutely right. So you're absolutely right, John. We're going on that again, which is to vote on the amended motion, option one. I didn't actually word it correctly, you're absolutely right. So the proposal of the one, would the town clerk read it out before we vote on it?
Uh, the amendment has been written option one, but once the letter of confirmation that if the club does not uh, continue. That they will pay the money back, and I will require a notification that this is going to happen within twelve working days. So we brought back to the next resources, and if no money's paid until that point.
Right, so we're voting on that amended motion.
Yes, amended motion, option one. Are you favour? Okay, that's two. Vote again. Three against one and the abstention. Okay, in which case we go back to the start. What is being proposed for the next one?
Can I just propose, um, similar to your amendment, which is to pay the sum as agreed. On receipt of written confirmation that they're about to start their youth club. So, as opposed to saying to delay payment, rather to pay the sum upon re-receiving written confirmation. From the youth club, but the, or the date when they will start the youth club. And if, when the reading of the club does not start, the document will then be required to turn money to our council. So the letter, as opposed to saying they will return the money, the letter will be saying that they're about to start.
Big. Ryan, John, then Martin.
Uh, just a point of confirmation. Um, with the Project Streetlight vote, I've now, I've got. Voted to support them. Um, but in the case of this, we, from my memory, and I could be wrong here. Did we delay the money until they gave an action plan for their startup?
Yes, they came to speak to us to tell us they wanted to amend the terms of their development.
Right, right. Just to clarify.
Right, okay. Um, John?
I thought it was, all right, okay. Um, I, I like the point, what you're saying, Abby, is that it reverses the impact of option two. Saying we will make the payments on confirmation that the youth club. Singular or plural, is about to start or has started. Once it starts again, at least one youth club, at least one youth club, possibly more, could be more, happens in June. And once we have confirmation that from them, then the payment will be made. So in a sense, it's turning option two on its head a little bit in an affirmative way, but that's what I need to propose. I would, I would be prepared to support that.
Martin?
I'm in favour of the amendment, but I think we ought to have some words in there about. Uh, a, as you alluded to there, John, youth club or youth clubs, because the original amendment. Uh, the original um, grant was for three youth clubs. And I think, let's support them and say, you know, they may not do that at the beginning, but. They need to have the aspiration of doing that, and then we will review the uh, grant next time round. Rather than automatically paying one of the four year ones. Because if they only do it for one youth club, then we may. Say, this is, this is not worthy of another four, you know, a, a, a regular payment, because obviously that was for three and we've only got one. So, you know, there needs to be some uh, recompense here, that we can't just give public money away. So. Uh, I'm happy with the amendment, but it, it needs some wording around, um. Around our original agreement and what they are going to do um, in their new um, venture.
Anthony, um, what's your view on?
Are you?
A view on the um, Abby's proposal as it stands, because it was quite. I felt it was quite precise, and what we've now, um, and it achieved. Pretty much the same as often one amended, but it, it wasn't, um, it was still encouraging. Whereas if we add other words to it, it becomes less encouraging.
Well, I, I'm an option two fundamentalist in this respect, because we've talked an awful lot. Quite rightly about the youth club and the people dealing with it, and so. John, with greatest respect, is blacking out heartstrings a little bit. Uh, I think that's reasonable to say. I, I, I sit on this, on this committee as a guardian of public money, and I take a fairly hard-nosed. A councilcy-style look at the money, and this is a hostage to fortune if we're not careful. And so therefore, with my meanie hat on, I would say I'm still stuck with the pure option two. If I'm outvoted, I accept that democratically, but that is my view.
Thank you. Right, I'm gonna take Abby once more, and then we'll move to.
I don't think I'm insert Martin's point in there, so that would fire us turning down the specific amount, so.
My coach, breathing, yeah. Thank you very much, and I'll take much. Yeah, check it, go on.
Abby, can.
Yes, I, I'd like to um, insert Martin's point in there. By one, turning down this specific amount, so the amount will be specified in that, so we need to pay. The pro rata, um, agreed amount upon receipt of written confirmation, that's two. Um, the number of club, implementing clubs, um, that youth club may want to start. So I take that point, and I, I do align with um, Martin with his concerns to public funds, that if. They're doing more than a support of people, um, youth clubs, then we need to look at the total amount that we've given us of the grant. So I'm happy to rephrase that, I'm saying again, that we to pay the pro rata sum. As will be agreed with the town clerk, upon receipt of a written confirmation as to when the clubs will start. Clubs and in bracket, clubs.
Right, so, so you give the word into the tablet, I think we're gonna take, to move this on, we've done a lot. John, move this on, I think, and I've listened, I'm tempted to, well, it was a, a per option, which one was accepted, that's fine. But you give the word of the tablet, and we're gonna take your um, amendment for it.
Can I suggest some wording that I think picks up?
Yeah, okay.
Said.
Yeah.
We agree to write to the Buckingham Youth Club, declaring we will pay them the agreed grant on confirmation that at least one. Youth club runs, and we will review the overall grant in January, depending on. Pro rata sum, number of clubs functioning.
Happy with that, Abby?
May I, I'm sorry, could you just move that back as you go ahead?
Sorry, I'm really, again, I'm really, of course. We agree to write to the, to Buckingham Youth Club, declaring that we will pay them the agreed grant. On confirmation that at least one youth club uh, is running. And we will review the overall grant in January, uh, depending on the pro rata number of clubs functioning.
So you'd like me to, if they agree that, you would like me to pay them the full amount straight away, and then look through. Call back some in January should, on a pro rata basis?
I don't like the call, the call back. No, I think it's like next year. I, I, I don't think we even say, I'm sorry, because they could have ended up running only two clubs, they could have ended up running five clubs. I don't think I'd rather depend upon them running, because, right, in the wording it is, yes, I can hear that. But we were flexible with Project Streetlight. Why have we not been flexible in the youth club?
So we don't get around another thing, because I'm conscious of this, it's out of the polls. Um, um, I'm happy with the amendment.
Well, I think, I think the, the pro rata is quite important. Um, but I, I do take both. Martin and Anthony's point on that, as to what the ones that, if they're running less than three clubs. And we can't be giving them more, for more than the number of clubs that they are running. So we need to be sure how many clubs they're running, and the funds we've given.
We ring that what we're gonna do, and then we're gonna go try a vote, and then we're gonna see where we go. We, we, what, what is the amendment as it stands? We'll go on that.
So we, we've got, um, we've got, council has proposed an amendment initially with. The addition of council try. Would you like to show you that first?
I think it wasn't in John's.
No, I haven't given that, because obviously the man has been rejected.
You, you, you're, you're, I think, the member of the table, I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to test John's amendment out. And then saying, we'll take it, Abby, we're accepting. So I was gonna go with that wording, and then if that counts, the only answer is to go back to option two. Which is, which is on the actual order, on the actual paperwork.
We just bought, I think, John, are you still seconding that one?
Well, I'm proposing it, but it does not include the idea of withdrawing the grant this year. It's saying, next year, yes, maybe. If there's only one, we'll be the rest of the year. But I don't think, I don't think it's right or fair to withdraw the funding in this current. fiscal year, because they can't manage to get two or even three clubs running. I think we need to give them some breathing space. But come January, come for a reset meeting, then we come to review all the grants. Then the four-year grant for the youth club will need to be reviewed, of course it will be, if they've only run one youth club. But let's be clear, we're secondary at the moment, they might be able to get one youth club up and running, but it will be in the center. Then come the autumn term with a new chance of people coming through to, you know, the eleven-year-olds joining the two schools, maybe they get seconded. And maybe my Christians have a third one. I think to take the money away now, because they have, we've got three money, like the second. I think is, is, is trophian. Um, I'm pulling my heartstrings as much as I possibly can, because I don't think it's fair. The organisation, we're limited in precedent, the previous case, the project.
Are you happy to go with that? And let me see where that gets, and if that falls?
No, I'm, I'm not good with that proposal.
So you amended an amendment halfway through.
So, sorry, to clarify, so, John has made a proposal, is, is it been seconded by anybody?
Seconded.
Seconding it, can I suggest that it's like.
Okay, all those in favour of?
No, we didn't have a game.
Yeah.
To be clear, we agree to write to the B Y C, declaring that we will pay them the agreed grant on the confirmation that at least one youth club. Uh, is up and running, and we will review the overall grant in January, depending on the pro rata number of clubs functioning then.
If that's seconded by, right, those in favour of that? Those against? Which case, I'd use chance in vote, in which case I'd go with the original proposal.
I guess.
And I'm, and we can treat it at this stage, and, and we're going to release that back into the, into the rules, to the meeting.
I can't go online, because I did check my phone out, tried to play games.
He's not influencing the vote.
True, true.
Even like facial, you know, like you, I could put on a, yeah, it's, yeah, absolutely, it's on.
No.
It's probably, and it's good to say also that, so obviously this, the kind of set next door, there's got people in it, you power up here, what is this?
I tell you what, what is nice, that those doors, it's, they're under refurbishment, it's much better, you don't actually have a toilet blocking that door now.
Sure, yeah.
We've got um button one, thank you.
Are we focusing on softened chairs, don't we?
No.
So, no, that base from Rexton, that's my body, is, do you know? We didn't receive any, can I?
Just to say that um, Abby will probably tell you the same, we, we agreed a motion at council, which was to, um which would be to strengthen the guidelines around white ribbon, which is and we agreed a motion at council amended, which one put, which was to strengthen the protection for women and girls in cars around white ribbon up at the council. All right, we all voted unanimously, can we add it? Um, to actually try and move that forward, it was amended, what I found was positively. And we managed to do some change of policy which will make it safer for um girls and young women to go out in the evening, and we put some regulations in elsewhere which was in supporting of the policies of the council that strengthens them around it, which found it needed strengthening, and there's one of those rare cases where there was overflow in agreement, I thought, in the room, that should do something for people, so. And that public and um.
How does that impact, because it's like you can't police it as a council?
No, it's due to the area that the council has influence over.
Oh, okay, well, I can't, well, can we have that?
Council run lives, the taxis, the council runs um other licensing venues such as gambling facilities and, and um and um, and they have influence over licensing. And, and I think, if my memory is correct, that's how it's going to work, so that they will, over time, it will get, so that we create a much safer environment for our daughters or our wives to go out in the evening, so that we know that people are more aware of their obligations to behave accordingly.
Right.
Um, so I think that was a positive thing, um, shortest debate ever, wasn't it, Abby?
As well, I, I, I'd also commend um Council's thought before bringing a motion, um, which I think is quite good, and found support with all members of the council, which I think is a very important, and I'm happy to have supported that motion. I was also gonna draw the council's attention to um the funds that were secured for the Royal Walk. Was like four, three million, who's acting travel England.
Oh.
Towards um completing that phase of the Buckinghamshire Reboot Project. Um, I understand, I know, John has asked this question in another forum. It's to more or less improve the um accessibility upgrades, safe crossing, surface improvement, car widening, um also the new, we find in signage, solar-studded lighting, and partition walls. So, uh.
Really first steps.
It is great news, and.
Yeah.
We're hoping that other links of the project within our patch would, would also be funded, and that any but still the pipe up. But biggest problem, you get that look.
Okay, you've got it, Eddie.
The proposal was from the cabinet member, is that it's in line with the Buckingham Neighbourhood Plan, which was to actually include that in the Buckingham Neighbourhood Plan.
Yeah.
The two hundred and seventy five thousand pounds in the section one O six would never have been enough to complete this. It went terribly silent on it, and then the officers went away and applied for a secondary grant, which they achieved, which actually is the reason this is outside, it wasn't in the Wixley League Light. And to credit the cabinet member, he wants to push on with that, and actually get this done. Um, maybe get the bodywork of it done now, and then in twenty twenty-five, um it may be going to construction. Because we've had enough years talking about it, and it was always a wish to make the Tidbit Road Estate function for education, um, so and it was originally put into the section one O six at the guidance of Catherine. And, and then we managed to get it into the section one O six, to actually get the principal this in about twenty thirteen, fourteen, which we managed to do, so ten pounds and pay credit that, the cabinet member takes credit from his offices to receive in the fund, and we'll all day immense pleasure when people can actually walk down there and cycle, I think it'd be the, it'd be the way forward, um, but it hadn't actually happened yet, and it will happen.
Is there anything, have you got anything else to add, Eddie? Thank you, anybody else? Excuse me, why?
Just to say, I'm forward with the comparison.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, all right, um, right, in turn, we're looking at the information, data protection policies, John?
Well, clearly Steve has gone through this, I know Steve probably gave him the fine teeth, but and Steve is saying that there's only a potential day like that, but I say I accept the recognition of that.
Yeah. Yeah, can I second? Abby, on. The votes can move to the votes.
Well, can I take Martin first, please, I might just all chat a bit, that's all. Martin, what have I said?
Um, yeah, I don't have any issue with the whole thing, but I do have an issue, or not an issue, I would like a um some parification, um, which I think is quite vague in there, but is becoming common commonplace in policies. Uh, on page thirty-one, um, the top line uh says comply with our legal regulatory, et cetera, et cetera, and at the end, and good practice. It's a very vague thing, because I've got some good practices which you wouldn't like. And I just wondered if there's a term which encompasses that, is, you know, what does it mean?
It, it is.
Or is it a get out?
It's a direct quotation from the uh Information Commissioners.
Well, then they've got it wrong then, because they don't have good practices.
Standard wording of what to include in your, your policy, so it's a direct quote from, from that, um. And I thought the document had already repeated what was agreed last year.
I accept that, but.
Yes, I suspect.
Somebody needs to look at that little two words.
They would advise us of what good practices.
No, but when everything else is tied down, and they put that, hmm, it's a real I know what it's meant to mean, but it could be taken, you know, in a different way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I obviously support that, um, obviously, Steve is correct, and that's what we're saying, and we in the, in the manual we reported, and we would reflect that, but I do think there is a what I would call evidence-based practice, where records is being properly tested, and we're using the research to say this works, this doesn't, an example of that, of course, is the recent proposal being proposed on street treatment, which is no other space to it, it's whatever. And so everybody, in all parts of government, not just in health service, but in the police service as well, should be seeing what's been shown to work, not just because someone says it's good.
Yeah.
And so if we were to change those words, I would say insert good evidence-based practice. And maybe add that to the, to the wording, because that in a sense reflects what Martin's saying.
Yeah.
And all of what we do should be evidence-based, there are limits on that. Sometimes if they're not open to double life control trial, for example, as a matter of considerations. So generally speaking, all of what we do, in all parts of government, in all parts of public service, anywhere, should be fast, so that's. So picking up what Martin's saying, we would prefer to, um, to, to support, and say it should say good, evidence-based practice.
Okay, Steve or Claire, would you like to come back on that, as to your thoughts? I think we should stick with the recommended wording that has been handed down by and everybody else is using, and complicates our policy in a way that I'm not sure I'm in a position to gather evidence-based best practice, John, I would rather just stick with what the other I say.
Oh, that's true. Are you able to define good practice then, when we find, no disrespect to you, I'm, I'm talking.
It will be whatever is on the F M I website.
I'll compare it to the good practice that we have to show in our annual audits, for example, yeah.
I'm, I'm not doing awkward, I just, it's a standard wording, it's keep it simple.
We need to challenge it though, it may be a good thing that.
Good points there, Charles, definitely.
Quite true.
And I'm happy to carry the wording, but anyone who's ever done a free information request, it's always most disappointing when you get the response. Um, um, uh, re- retracted information and stuff on it, I did one on the um waste contract for Whitton once, and it was the most disappointing document I ever saw when I got it back. There was so much retracting, but the black ink outweighed the white ink on it, and it senses stuff that was not included because of commercial confidentiality, um, so free information, sometimes it always produces the outcome you want it to.
Right, so get back to our.
Yeah, so I'm quite happy to go with the proposal and invite the town clerk to move it on, I mean.
Yeah, well, we had, um, John was gonna, you know, post it, and we had like three people.
And see that, yeah.
And see, that goes, yeah, I think I did it first, yeah. Um, right, so can we all vote, uh, basically, will, please show? That is unanimous, thank you very much. Thanks for that, I'd be interested as well.
Yes, good start.
Yeah.
You may agree with me.
Okay, um, right, eleven, Josh's staff handbook. So Steve, would you like to talk on this?
There's a lot more work's gone into this one, I have to say, I've thought already, you'll know why. So, uh, you know, we can have a staff handbook, you all, all I'm sure remember. Uh, they recently changed our H R advisor, uh, they have drafted, um a whole reforged of our staff handbook, hence I wasn't able to give you a little bit uh, thousands like I've done on previous uh amendments, although you were given a, a link to the uh, existing handbook, um, the, the council uh bases its um, terms and conditions and so forth on the, on the so-called green book, uh, which is a a national agreement, um, we have worked through to make sure that our H R partners have put uh, those bits in correctly, and you'll see that there's other legislation that I've commented on which has changed since the, this draft before of the first of the, of March, uh, which is coming to effect since the first of April, so we are waiting on the text of that to change it, but it would only be, um legal requirements, nothing that we will be able to uh disagree on. Um, so the intention is that we asked today, members to recommend that uh, the base of this draft, subject to those amendments, legal amendments that are required today, is forwarded to full council.
Yeah, okay, all right, John?
A couple of points, one is if this is standard border plate, for the effects of legislation and the national agreement terms and conditions are employed by local councils, then unless there's anything in there that's particularly Buckingham best, then obviously we have to accept it, because it's a national agreement, reflecting, um, not national good practice, but national legislation. Um, so I think there's, so if that's the case, then it really gives most of the sense in that, in that sense. And I would be happy to support the recommendation, but the second point is for information.
Okay.
Um, I was at the B M Cal um executive meeting last week, and I was told, and the staff could know this, um, but there is a benefit for Clark, the town clerk, and Zoom, the town clerk's staff to use an employee assistance programme, people who are under stress or in need of some sort of coaching, that is there, that the B M Cal pays for to support the clerical, um, support the councils around the whole county, including North Kings. I'm assuming you're aware of that, Claire, but also, this is where the information might be available to, but it wasn't, I learned for the first time, is that's now been extended to councillors as well. So if councillors feel under stress and want to talk about it with somebody, who does not have to arrange the council and, and town clerk or town council to work, he can arrange anything, dogs, dog, or something, whatever, you're gonna talk to somebody, then that's something available to us as councillors as well, care on the M Cal, that we paid for to us, to the M Cal, and then to now, and so on. So that's just for information, because it's relevant to this in a way. Um, but my view is, as I've said, that we should accept this, unless there are certain things that are bucking me fine, which we need to know about.
Like, I'll just come back to that. Couple of points there, there are some of the more minor things, such as wearing your I D badge, what the dress code is, that are relevant to Buckingham, all of the big stuff, obviously, the um performance management, terms and conditions, these are all fairly standard, they're all this aligned for what is in people's contracts. So there isn't really much we're going to change. But there are some bits in here about how you go about Buckingham annually, for instance, that are, sit how we do things, but that's just how we organise ourselves. Hmm. In answer to your second point, we also, part of our workness deal does give us a full employee assistance programme. I wasn't aware that the M Cal had, or now had extended that, they're offering out to councillors. Have they provided any wording in so far, so?
No, Mel just mentioned that at the meeting last week, um, so I would take it back to Mel and ask her, because it is important that all the gun, just like it is. All councillors should know about.
Okay. Yeah, that, that, Robin.
Quite like the amendment, thanks Steve for it, is the only comment I'd make, even if it's anywhere, he writes to um John Trade Union and saying that you should, you're something, you know, it is a legal right, you can be a member of the union, so.
If things are legal rights, and they're not necessarily stated in them.
So, what's it, it's just that, you know, it's not in the staff handbook, the team that people break in.
Yeah, no, I, I've joined the union in a sense, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm always quite keen, it's protection against each other and, and your employers, so.
Yeah.
And councillors, you know, I think.
I mean, it's not specifically mentioned in there, but obviously it is a legal right, so.
Yeah, but we must make sure, I mean, you know, just to make sure we advise them of that legal right, and.
Would you like that added?
Just add me, the great headline that they clarify that they have the legal right to join the trade union, they don't have to ask them to do it, but they just need to know they have the legal right to be able to do it. We shouldn't be in the business of telling them to join it or whatever.
No, 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 it's a visor, isn't it, it's not an instruction, yeah.
There are several references to the fact that you can have a trade union official accompany you to various games, things, and so forth, they're already in there.
Okay.
Which case, we should, we should be labelled, able to label they can do it, like they're, they're employed, right, because if.
I'm just looking for it, see.
I wasn't in previous, what's in a smaller collection?
We can add a line, it would probably sit reasonably nicely into part one, if that's a specific, uh, to those of them.
It should be, again, if you're outside, and then I think everything else is fine, because most people are, you know, people could.
We need to vote on that, as in, as in addition to, but, sorry, John, go on.
Yeah, I would second that, I'd like to see what else to say as well, I would say.
Okay, so can, do you wanna speak before we go to vote? We just vote on this one, Sharon, and we can take that off, and then next time they just. All right, so, uh, those in favour of having the amendment first, um, that the joining of the union um, bit that Robin said is gonna be added into it, so those who agree, Robin's amendment? Um, do you see? That's carried, thank you, um, those who disagree, no objections, thank you very much, um, John?
Just to say, as we're talking about start wellbeing and wellbeing and the else, uh, just to commend, um Adam of its way in the window for International Workers Memorial Day, which happened yesterday. Um, there was an event in Walton Kings attended by, um, two members, at least, several councillors, I've obviously said. Two mayors, at least several councillors, and obviously seven officials, and another, this about, about, probably about forty people, four presidents altogether. And, and it's been, we had this display this, this week, this is, I've learnt yesterday, that more people. Die as a result of workplace intolerance than in war, in the course of a year. So, you know, it's, it's a major issue, hopefully not anywhere, anywhere close to what's in our own, our own staff. But health and safety is something that we should always be very, very aware of, and that's for those who create citizens who work, and those who work within the city. It cannot be overemphasised, the importance of, of that, and I hope that we will continue with that display in subsequent years. But I accept that we may have to have another motion on that, or make that part of our civic calendar, because it is a civic task to raise people aware of the importance. Of health and safety, it's good to see, obviously, start that.
Yeah, okay, so can we take a vote on the Josh's staff handbook? That we agree that it's gonna go to for council, so those who agree. Yeah, yeah, you know, that's unanimous, okay, thank you, everybody. Nice, so back to the board. And what have you got, anything on here? No, anything, Claire? Right, and we'll wait back up. Right, Sharon's answers, I don't have anything, do you have anything, Claire?
No, but members, if you could hold on at the end of the confidential session, or if you want to update or something.
Right, date the next meeting, it's running for the June, can't believe that we're gonna be nearly summer. Um, thank you, everybody, for attending, we are gonna go into our private session now, if members agree.
Agree.
Thank you very much, you know, right, thank you.